Good evening. I now call the February 5th, 2020 meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are present and accounted for. And before we move on, we'd like to officially welcome back Ms. Monica Smith as a member of the school board. We're so happy to have you.
Thank you.
We know you're gonna do a good job as you did the four years that you served. So, we're excited that you're a part of this team, especially as we move forward with some very critical decisions for Hampton City Schools.
Thank you so much. I'm excited to work with you as well.
Thank you. Moving on to the invocation, I'll now turn it over to our student liaison, Mr. Joey Bowers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Smith. Tonight, Ravelt Johnson, a 7th grade student at Sims Middle School, will be giving us the invocation. So Ravelt, when you're ready, go ahead and lead us in the pledge.
May you please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hello, my name is Ravelt Johnson, and I'm going to be saying a poem called "Equipment" by Edgar A. Guest. Figure it out for yourself, my lad. You've all that the greatest of men I've had. Two arms, two hands, two legs, two eyes, and a brain to use if you would want to be wise. With this equipment they all began, so start for the top and say I can. Look them over, the wise and great, they take their food from the common plate. A similar knife and spoon they use, with similar laces they tie their shoes. The world considers them brave and smart, but you've all they had from the start. You can triumph and come to skill, you can be great if only you will. You're equipped for what fight you choose, you have legs, arms, and a brain to use. And the man who has risen, great dreads to do, begin his life with no more than you. You are the handicap you must face, you are the one who must choose your place. You must say where you want to go, how much you will study the truth to know. God has equippeded you for life, he lets you decide what you want to be. Courage must come from the soul within, the man must furnish the will to win. So figure it out for yourself, my lad. You were born, all the great you've had, with the equipment that all began. Get hold of yourself and say I can.
Hey, awesome job Ravelt. Hey Ravelt, has a firm handshake, and I appreciate someone that has a firm handshake.
Thank you.
So, from Sims, so how you enjoying the school year so far?
It's fine.
It's fine? It's middle of the year, you know, it gets pretty slow, I understand that. So, what's your favorite subject in school?
Reading.
Reading? That's my favorite subject, I love reading. You like to read books?
Yes, sometimes.
Sometimes, I understand. What kind of books you like to read?
Like Diary of a Wimpy Kid.
Okay, okay. I haven't read Diary of a Wimpy Kid since 2nd grade, so I don't know how the series has expanded since. So, yeah, is there anybody here that you'd like to introduce?
My mom, Jamel Borden, and my two cousins.
As in the stand.
I know you had the, your principal was here too, right?
Oh yeah, Ms. Jenkins.
Hey, great, great job Ravelt.
Thank you.
That was awesome.
Any comments from board members? Yes, Mr. Samuels?
I do, Madam Chair. Ravelt, as you were reciting that poem, I was getting very emotional, and the reason being because my grandfather shared that with me, and he lived until he was 101. And so, I was just reflecting on his voice as you were reciting that. So, thank you so much for sharing that.
You're welcome.
Any other board members? It was absolutely fantastic. Dr. Smith and I were both sitting here saying how much we like that. And I especially liked that piece, it says courage must come from the soul within, because that's absolutely right. Thank you, and thank you for sharing him with us tonight.
Thank you.
For the next order of business, we'll move to item 1.03, which is the adoption of the agenda. Is there motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and second by Ms. Henry that we approve tonight's agenda as presented. Is any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye, motion carries. And as we move to item 2 on our agenda, School Board Recognition Month, this will be taken care of by our Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing, Ms. Kelly Goral. Where is Ms. Goral? I know, where is Ms. Goral, Dr. Mr. Kilgore, have you seen her?
I have not seen her either.
Have you not seen her all night?
I saw her earlier, but I don't know where she is.
I don't, Dr. Smith?
Let's see, I saw her when I first arrived, but you know, she's a member of the Division Leadership Team, and I have a difficult time trying to keep up with all of the members on the Division Leadership Team. Ah, she's sitting around, let's see.
Hello, we are live here at Jaguar Field at Jones Magnet Middle School. I'm Wube Abubakar.
And I'm Kelly Goral. Tonight is certainly a special night. We are celebrating our Hampton City School Board members as February is School Board Appreciation Month.
That's right, Kelly. These All-Star teammates are always working hard for the students of Hampton City Schools. Let's meet our All-Star team.
So here's the lineup for tonight from our Hampton City School Board. First up is Dr. Richard Mason. Dr. Mason, please step up to home plate. Dr. Mason is a graduate of Hampton University. Go Pirates! Batting at 500, he has been serving our students and staff on the school board since 2018.
On deck is Dr. Reginald Woodhouse. Dr. Woodhouse graduated from Geneva College, home of the Golden Tornadoes. He leads the team in RBIs, assisting the school board since 2016.
And next is Monica Smith, who was recently called up to rejoin the team. Monica is playing a pivotal role, filling in on the board for the remainder of the school year. She is a graduate of Virginia Tech. Go Hokies!
The veteran of the team, School Board Member Phyllis Henry. Ms. Henry has been slugging game-winning hits since 2004. She's a graduate from UNC Chapel Hill. Go Heels!
And next on the mound is School Board Member Jason Samuels. Samuels graduated from Norfolk State University. Yes, behold, the green and gold. On the mound, he holds the lowest ERA since 2014.
From the bullpen is Vice Chair Joe Kilgore. Mr. Kilgore graduated from Old Dominion University. Go Big Blue! He has come up with some big saves for this winning team since 2010.
And finally, we have the manager of this All-Star team, Ms. Ann Cherry, the Chair of the Hampton School Board. Ms. Cherry is a graduate from West Virginia State University, home of the Yellow Jackets. She has been keeping the team focused on academic excellence since 2016.
You know, Kelly, all of our School Board members are MVPs because they play crucial roles in our students' education. They're also a part of Hampton City Schools being 100% accredited without conditions.
That's right, Wube. They certainly do make a difference. And so, we extend a huge thank you to our Hampton City School Board for all that you do, for every child, every day, whatever it takes.
And folks, that's it for tonight's lineup. As this All-Star team will sign autographs, take photos at home plate with our very own Hampton Crabbers baseball team coached by Danny Mitchell. Then, we will get to the real fun. Staff reports. Dr. Smith, you're on deck.
We have to give it to your team members.
We have to give our team members, yeah.
All right, real quick, Ms. Cherry, your members come up real quick, right? With my shoes on. Once again, for the clapper, let's give him a hand. Leadership in terms of Hampton High School, the Hampton High School. We have Mr. Pitt, please stand. Athletic Director, please stand.
Mr. Fortune. And Dr. Smith, you've done such a nice job, I'm going to hire you in the PR Marketing Department. I didn't have to come out and do photos. Before everybody leaves the stage, I'd like to kind of finish our celebration. But as you can tell from this great celebration, the month of February marks the annual observation of School Board Appreciation Month, a time to salute the work of the School Board members and celebrate public education. The Virginia School Boards Association theme for this year is Excellence Through Equity, which reflects the top priority of local School Board members as they advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of our students. So, local school boards keep the public in charge of public schools since they represent their community's beliefs and values. In Hampton City Schools, our school members must develop policies and make decisions on complex educational and social issues impacting the entire community. So, in essence, they are truly our HCS All-Stars, as they advance opportunities for every child, every day, whatever it takes. And before I close, I would like to thank Coach Danny Mitchell, he was not able to join us this evening, but Mr. Pitt and Mr. Fortune were, so thank you so much. And a huge thank you to part of our Hampton High Crabber baseball team for helping us celebrate tonight, so another round of applause for these young men. And a few other thank yous, Ms. Sharnita Carmona in our graphics department for all of the graphical work and helping put the tokens appreciation together. And of course, Peg TV for their hard work around tonight's presentation. And Ms. Lisa Height for being here for our photos. I'd also like to thank Cigna for the HCS baseball caps that are included in your tokens appreciation, as well as Peninsula Pilots for providing each board member with two tickets for their upcoming season. So, Madam Chair, that concludes the presentation tonight.
I think I speak for all board members when I say that was absolutely wonderful. Thank you so much, Ms. Goral, and everybody who participated. I'm very excited about those tickets to the ballgame. Say that right now. Before we move on, I'd like to ask, excuse me, our Clerk of the Board, Ms. Bowers, to please join me at the mic. As you know, we have an excellent School Board Clerk. Ms. Bowers has been it for many, many years. And I can tell you that the 3rd week of February, the Virginia School Board Association has designated that as School Board Clerk Appreciation. But what we like to do is make sure that we do it on camera, because that's how much she means to me. That's how much she means to every member of the school board. So, one of the things we wanted to do was present you, Ms. Bowers, with something, and it's a small token, but you should eat quite a bit off this, and we know what you like. This is from every member of the school board, because you keep us focused, you keep us straight, and I'm gonna tell you, half the time, we're a little confused, but not because we just don't get it, it's because there's so many things we have to do in a day. And even if we're on target, Ms. Bowers will call us and say, "Don't forget, this is due on this date." She has done it for many, many board members throughout, what, over 20 years?
24.
24 years. She's been doing that. So, let's have a big round of applause for Ms. Bowers. We love you. And my little Hampton High guy was named Chase, and he told me he didn't mind me sharing, so... In our book, you're number one.
Aw.
Okay, thank you. I tell you, Dr. Smith, you and your staff have got us so excited, now we're ready to go home. But I guess I have to go through with the rest of the agenda. Moving on, the next item is 3.01, actually, our Consent Agenda, which consists of Personnel Report Number 20-02. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the Consent Agenda as presented.
A second.
It has been properly moved by Ms. Henry and second by Dr. Woodhouse that we accept tonight's Consent Agenda as presented. Is any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye, motion carries.
I guess that should have said approve, Ms. Chairman, but I'm so excited about my collection of baseball cards here, to go with my Wayne Gomes rookie card.
So... I think it's safe to say you've already been in your bucket. I see, okay. Okay. Moving on to Superintendent Staff Reports, I'll now turn it over to our number one Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Members of the Board. It's my pleasure at this time to ask Dr. Raymond Haynes to come forward, who serves as Executive Director for School Leadership, especially at the secondary level. And he will introduce this particular presentation as one of the specific goals set forth by the Board for the 2019-2020 year. A particular goal identified that the Board would receive an annual update with regards to progress in the area of the Academies of Hampton. And so, Madam Chair, I'm delighted to share with you that Dr. Haynes will introduce, and then Ms. Hurd share information regarding the Academies of Hampton.
Good evening, Madam Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, Members of the Board, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. Of course, we are excited to present this update on the Academies of Hampton. As you know, there's been a great deal of hard work that has gone into getting these academies up and running. So, tonight, we will discuss several of the transformative efforts that are taking place throughout our schools, and on our vision to make Hampton City Schools the number one choice for every student. Tonight, we will talk about four topics: the annual retreat, and summer reflection, summer experiences, the extended enrichment experience, and transforming the secondary experience. We have seen more and more pockets of excellence in our schools for each of these, and our next major step is to take what is working well in all of our different academies and systematically ensure that all of our students have this transformative education that prepares them for college careers and life. Part of this system is the variety of experiences that you see here. And as you see, many of you are familiar with this slide. It just takes you through what our high school students experience from grades 9 through 12, and we're proud to announce that next year, we will be full-scale, wall-to-wall, with implementation of the Academies of Hampton. And also, next year, the class of 2021 will be the first class that graduates with having that experience from 9th grade up through their senior year with the academies and the pathways. And I'm proud to say, just a little plug here, that my daughter is in the class of 2021 at Kickitane High School. Throughout all of this, we understand-
Dr. Haynes, before you continue, and also, my daughter at the Hampton High.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Throughout all of this, we understand that in order for our students to be successful, it is important for them not to only have the technical skills, but other career and life skills, one of the most important ones being collaboration. The Hampton City Schools' portrait of a graduate undergirds all of the work that we do. We're proud of the journey that we're on to help our students receive a high-quality education that empowers them to actually reach their full potential. Based on our work with Ford Next Generation Learning this past summer, we know that this work cannot be done in silos, and we have to collaborate. It is, of course, the synergy that comes from the best ideas being shared and implemented across the division that we will develop our young people into the creative, world-changing citizens that we know they can be. At this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ms. Veronica Hurd, our Academies of Hampton Director, to conclude it. And then, at the conclusion, of course, we will entertain any questions or thoughts from there.
Good evening, Chairperson Cherry, Vice Chairperson Kilgore, School Board Members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. I am honored to be here this evening to provide you all with an update on where we are within this transformation. But to get started this evening, I definitely wanted to take a moment to honor Black History Month and start it with a quote by Langston Hughes, "A Dream Deferred." What happens to a dream deferred? Does it dry up like a raisin in the sun? Or fester like a sore, then run? Does it stink like rotten meat? Or crust and sugar over like a syrupy sweet? Maybe it just sags like a heavy load? Or does it explode? What happens to a dream deferred? That's what we're doing here. We are working together to ensure our young people do not defer their dreams. We do not want our young people to defer the dream to become an engineer, a pilot, to own their own businesses, to go to college, or whatever their course is next. We are transforming what it means to teach and learn, yes, to increase that graduation rate, to ensure our young people come to school every day, and all those important things. But what's at the core of the work that we're doing? We want to ensure that our young people do not defer their dreams because of the current state of their reality. So, as a division, we are committed to transforming what it means to teach and learn in Hampton City Schools, to ensure our young people are prepared for success in careers, lifelong learning, and life. We've been on this journey for some time, and we haven't presented to you all for a little bit, except for last month, but I wanted to provide you all with some updates on just where we are in the transformation and the structures that we're putting in place to make sure that this is not only putting paint on the wall, or things of that nature, but ensuring that we're transforming in a space of fidelity, putting structures in space that makes sure that not only that we are the premier school division, but then our young people leave us prepared for whatever comes next. We've been busy over the summer months preparing for our teachers to come back and our students to roam our halls, but this work could not happen without the Academies of Hampton steering- to roam our halls, but this work could not happen without the Academies of Hampton Steering Committee. While I will not go through all the individual members, but we do want to make sure that at the forefront of this initiative, these individuals are committed to steering us in the right direction, and in ensuring that any gaps that we have within the transformation model, in addition to your support, that they are there to help fill those voids. The Steering Committee has had multiple goals throughout the transformation, and during the 2018 Annual Retreat, they came up with some goals that they wanted us to move forward. As you can see here, the Steering Committee put forth that we develop formalized operation structures, strategic alignment of advisory boards, and success matrix and monitoring tools. I would like to share with you that with the identified goal one, you can see here that the Steering Committee has become a formalized board with an operating structure and onboarding structures as well, to ensure that new members are onboarded with fidelity. In addition to that, we wanted to ensure that we had strategic alignment within the advisory boards. Those are the advisory boards that consist in our high schools, so we have 16 academies, as you're all aware of. Each high school, each academy has an advisory board, and so we want to ensure that we have authentic business engagement on those advisory boards. So we are eliciting the support of our Steering Committee, and as you can see here, this is the structure that we've put in place. So, at the top, you'll see Steering Committee X member will become the champion for one of the advisory boards that aligns with either their expertise or passion. I can share that school board chairperson Cherry is the Steering Committee champion for the On Stage Performing Arts Academy. So they help to fill the voids and support the academy by, again, identifying areas in need, and then reaching out into the community to ensure that they have representation on that board. As of right now, we have 10 of 16 academy champions identified and onboarded. This is just to highlight some of the academy Steering Committee champions, and it just shows you the diversity that we have, but you also can see that there are some academies that are still advocating or in need of champions. And so, again, we're looking at the gaps on the Steering Committee, in addition to in our, on our advisory boards, to ensure that we have representation for all our academies. I think you'll see another familiar name with Dr. Jeffrey Smith, champion of teaching, education, and learning. There's a little competition going on, I think, amongst individuals. So finally, the identified goal was Goal Three, to develop success matrix and monitoring tools. And really, we were looking at building practices of integrating and implementing academy-driven monitoring systems. So again, this is a new model that we're incorporating into a traditional learning environment. So some of the traditional structures that we had in place have to be adjusted to fit the academy model. And so that's the work that we've been doing here. The one thing that you are all familiar with is the Portrait of a Hampton Graduate. That is the work that guides everything that we do. We want to ensure that our young people leave and walk across that stage with Portrait of a Hampton Graduate. So we have looked at the Portrait of a Hampton Graduate, and each of those qualities that you see, so they'll have the necessary life and career skills, communication, collaboration, and leadership, a positive sense of self and purpose, and they will also be able to go ahead with all these outcomes. So what we have done, we looked at the Portrait of a Hampton Graduate, and we want to ensure that each one of those qualities have measurable outcomes associated with them. It is from those measurable outcomes that we're looking at, okay, this, as a community, we are committed to ensuring that our young people have this, and this is how we will demonstrate that they've received this. And so when they go across the stage, we can say, "This is how we are identifying that this is a Portrait of a Hampton Graduate." So keeping the end in mind, we are backward mapping with the Freshman Academy to ensure that every time our young people scale up and move to that next grade level, that they have accomplished the milestones that are associated with that grade level. And then, so when they are leaving us that 12th grade year, they're the Portrait of a Hampton Graduate. I hope that makes sense. So looking at now, moving to step three, you can see that we're creating a systematic data entry process to monitor experiences and certification. I can share with you all, this does not currently, this isn't available across the Ford and GL Network. So as a community, we're becoming exemplars, again, of creating a system, an internal system within our student information system, where we can track those outcomes of becoming a Portrait of a Hampton Graduate in our internal database. So moving up next step, so now we can input the experiences our young people are having, the certifications that they're receiving, the guest speakers they've been exposed to, these different things. So as a collective entity, we can see where our cohort is moving along with the experiences and the outcomes, but also as an individual. So we can look up Ms. Phyllis Henry and see where she's at, as a ninth grader or 10th grader, in those Portrait of a Graduate outcomes, and then to see if we need to adjust and move ahead accordingly. So then, step four, so we have another layer. So as shared before, step three is a new system that's put in place. Now, step four, we have some existing things already. So we are all familiar with the Response to Information Data Dashboard that we have as a division, where it tells us the story of all our young people. In addition to that, we also have the, let me go first, we have the Achieving Game Plans, where it really shows you the different success matrices that are in place for our young people. So what we wanted to do is to make sure that our systems, this is, again, One Division, One Transformation, are communicating with each other with all the same outputs in front, in that forefront. So here, and I jumped ahead, but you can see the integrated platforms are now communicating. So our student information system, the RTI database, and the Student Achievement Game Plans website are communicating in a collective way that are, it's helpful not only to our teachers and our administrators, but it's all set in the forefront and meeting the leads of our Hampton Portrait of Graduate. So with that being said, we're really ensuring that we are One Division, we are One Transformation. We're bringing multiple entities part of the conversation to really think about how we're being purposeful and methodical in meeting the needs of our young people, and then putting those supports in place that help our teachers and administrators to find innovative ways to reach the needs. So again, making sure that our young people are not only going from ninth to 10th grade, but eventually seeing them cross that stage and being that Portrait of a Hampton Graduate. So building capacity is key when you're transforming a school division. We want to make sure that it does not matter if leadership changes or people come and go, that we have the structure in place for longevity's purposes. So as you can see here, over the summer, we have incorporated, again, this has become another exemplar for the Ford Next Generation Learning Community of a professional development that we've incorporated, where we trained up our academy principals, Mr. Pippus Partovit, along with our team leads. So they received a division-wide training led by a Ford Next Generation coach. So then, what the training did, it created an opportunity for them to map out their academy experiences for the year, creating that time where they didn't have other things pulling and vying for their attention, to think and be methodical about what the upcoming school year is going to be like. So through that training, they would then tossed to create their own professional development opportunity that would be incorporated during pre-service for their team of teachers that allowed them to build upon the structure they put in place during that one training. Again, not only building capacity, creating spaces of ownership for our leaders, but then also carving out time where they are free to just think about what it is they're trying to move forward with, not only for themselves, but then also for their teachers. So something that's very near and dear to our heart is creating spaces for students to have authentic voice in what we're doing. So in addition to our administrators and our team leads, we introduced our lead ambassadors to be part of this training during the summer. So what you can see here is a systematic youth development ambassador model, another exemplar for the Ford Next Generation Learning Community. So what we did, we brought together student, our lead student ambassadors, so we had two from each high, oh, excuse me, each academy join us. And then, they were, in addition to the administrators and the teachers, and they had a team-building experience together. They actually went to go ape. I should have put the video in there of Dr. Haynes, but I like my job for right now, but I'll send it to you later, just joking. So they had a team-building experience together, where they were challenged. They were challenged, the adults were challenged, the students were challenged, but they got through it together one way or another. So then, they came back and they learned together in this same space. What does it mean to be an ambassador? It doesn't matter if you are a young person or an older person, how do you become an ambassador and advocate for the community that you're a part of? So they learned together. Then they came together and they celebrated together, and we were all there at the annual retreat, excuse me, the annual dinner, and we saw all our young people together. So then, they came back and they did a reflect review and plan together. So, okay, moving ahead, what's next year going to look like? And it created the space for the students to be part of that leadership team, in addition to the adults. So then, as you can see here, we're working towards step five, where our lead ambassadors, our academy principals, and our team leads are developing what an ambassador program looks like within their buildings. We know young people have an authentic space to not only just guide and create this vision within their structures of their buildings, but carrying that out not only makes leaders, but it also ensures that they are empowered and they know their value, and that they honestly can produce change. So this model here is something that we're very passionate about, and we're excited to see how it unfolds. But in that center, you can see, we are in this together, and you can see the academy principal, team lead, coaches, ambassadors, and business partner really came together to see what this looks like from that personal lens. Here's just some pictures of showing you all what this experience looked like: build bonds and learn to work together, and then celebrate and plan ahead. So extended enrichment learning has been another thing that we are really pushing ahead, and we've had the luxury of receiving grant funds from the Virginia Department of Education for a number of years. So these funds are really to create an opportunity to close the summer learning gap, the achievement gaps, and to create equitable learning opportunities within and outside of the classroom. So here, our Extended Enrichment Learning Program is really all about connecting that academic and technical development with passion and purpose and focus, and then this enrichment experience that kind of brings it all together. So here's just some of them. So as you can see, hence the color, represents the high school, but we had 16 different, well, technically 14 different summer experiences that were going on for young people, where they were challenged to solve a challenge that a business partner was experiencing. So the one I would like to highlight briefly is the Transportation Analytics Information and Logistics Academy. That's the yellow one at Bethel High School. They worked with the Virginia Department of Education, and it was called the Big Hiccup, because I'm not sure if you're familiar, but the bridge to Hicks Island is aging, and so they're trying to figure out what are they supposed to do about it. So they invited our students to be part of this exploration experience, to really come up with some ideas and suggestions of what may be put in place to help with this big hiccup, where they create this bridge from, Hick Bridge, and then address it accordingly. So how can you repair a bridge to an island while allowing the residents access to the mainland? So our students came up with three innovative ideas. Basically, they said, "Go ahead and just do two bridges, one on each side, address it that way." They said, "Do a footbridge, so individuals can walk across." And then they said, "While you're doing everything, why not put them up into a resort area, so then they don't have to be, have the disruption that they're experiencing?" So of course, there's the economic side that they need to adjust just a little bit, but we were encouraged that they were, had a voice in this process, where it's real world, and nobody technically has the answer as of yet. So that was just one of the highlights that we wanted to share with you all. In addition to that, we're really being mindful in structuring things that we're doing in the community in a purposeful way. So we've collaborated with Hampton, the city of Hampton, and with their Summer Youth Employment Program, they have allocated slots to us from the academy lines, that we can offer paid internships for our young people through the academy model. So not only are we being purposeful and mindful, but we're creating paid opportunities for young people that may usually not have this opportunity during the summer. So again, this is how our partners are engaging with us and seeing things that are currently already going on, and seeing how can we realign this to really benefit the all who are involved. So this is one of the opportunities, and we're actually doing this again this year, so it's great. One of the things that we want to be mindful of when it comes to the challenge-based learning experiences, and even with our extended learning opportunities, is extended learning is an extension from what's going on during the school day. What makes the academy model an academy model is bringing in those core classes and creating opportunities for you to see how they interact with each other to produce real-world experiences. So what we are doing, we have created a project-based learning division showcase. So April 18th, mark your calendars, we will be at Phoebus High School, where our young people will demonstrate their project-based learning experiences that they've been working on, not only during the school day, but their, how they were extended into the extension of school time as well. So this is something, again, where we're being really purposeful about everything that we're doing, and ensuring that it's at the anchor of the Academies of Hampton model. And there will be additional information on that as well. So as Dr. Smith likes to say, we are not just putting paint on the walls. And we are definitely not putting just paint on the walls. And to be honest with you, we're putting our money where our mouths are, to ensure that we are really redesigning the physical spaces that our young people are learning within. So as you can see here, and this is not something new to you all, and this has a recent article, thanks Daily Press, in the Daily Press, that highlighted some of the things that are equipment that are currently in our buildings. So this is the Anamarch Table at Bethel High School, where our young people are able to dissect and really get a better awareness of the human body without having to have a physical human body there. And so this is some of the industry-grade instructional tools that are being introduced to our teachers and our students within our buildings. So the 21st Century Collaborative Learning Spaces is something that's all about this model, tearing down walls to ensure that our young people are learning in innovative spaces, not only with inside of our classrooms, but also taking them outside of our classrooms as well. So this is Phoebus High School, and it's the maker space, where our young people will have the opportunity to come together to have conversation about projects they may be doing. But also, in addition to the space, we've introduced virtual reality glasses, where our young people can go on virtual field trips while in this space as well, that are directly connected to their, I know, directly connected to the curriculum that they're being introduced. Our teachers are actually being trained on the goggles and how they can incorporate them within their classes in the coming weeks as well. So here's the cybersecurity learning lab that you would also see at Phoebus High School. Of course, you, hopefully, you're all familiar. If not, I think they're having a Valentine's Day dinner, so, or lunch, so please join them at the Blue Fountain Inn. Here's the maritime lab. The hydroponic greenhouse. And then also, in addition to this, we have some items that are currently in production. So in the, at Kickitah High School, we're developing a financial institute, institution, and this is just a rendering. At Phoebus High School, we are developing a digital video production lab. I'm sure some of us in here are very excited for this. And then we'll have various others that are coming on as we scaffold this in, but those are two of them that are coming soon. Of course, there's others, and I'm excited, but I'm going to pause on where we're going with this, but we are truly transforming teaching and learning, the secondary school experience, and creating spaces for business and civic engagement. So thank you ever so much for your time. We are excited and really energized by the work that we're doing, but most importantly, it's for our young people. They deserve for us to advocate for them, and most importantly, to ensure that whatever is available to them, that we move the barriers out the way, so they can secure not only their dreams, which are literally the wishes of the heart, that we reveal it to them, and then create a space for their dreams to become their reality. So thank you ever so much. We appreciate your ongoing support.
Thank you.
This time, there are any questions or comments? We can certainly entertain them at this time.
Great report. Any questions or comments from board members? Yes, Mr. Kilgore?
I'd just like to say to both Dr. Haynes and Ms. Hurd, I like the fact that we record these meetings on YouTube, because at the beginning of the presentation, you both made very powerful statements. You talked about our pockets of success and what we're going to do with those to replicate them across. And Ms. Hurd, your poem on deferred dreams and relating that to how we implement that in the academies was just very powerful. So thank you both for that. And I also wanted to compliment you on something we did team with Ford Next Generation Learning, but you highlight the fact that we take things and we lead when we partner with folks to where we're leading the way in integrating the data collection for our metrics and our monitoring. So again, thank you. Great report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. Yes, Ms. Henry?
I think every time we get these reports, we're just kind of in awe. And I remember young people, when we were first proposing this, saying, "You're trying to make me fit into something that I may not want to fit into." And I think that it's clear that there are so many opportunities and so many choices to get excited about, that the young people have so many choices, and it's amazing that we've worked out all the things that everybody thought would be- And it's amazing that we've worked out all the things that everybody thought would be roadblocks like transportation and choice and where kids are going to really get to do what they wanted to do. But above and beyond that, back when they started talking about changing paradigms in education, they said that young people would be changing their career seven times in their lifetime. I know with my child, I wondered why that that was before she was 35, she changed her career seven times. But the thing about all these approaches is that we're teaching young people skills that are transferable from one pathway, one career to another. And that if you're studying hospitality management, all those things like how do I use data to make decisions, those transfer over to medical. And if I'm studying nutrition, I may collaborate with somebody who's in the culinary arts because we want to make nutrition more attractive to people. And so I think there are so many avenues for children to learn that the sky's the limit and that they're not being boxed in. I'm not teaching you how to be a welder and you're going to do this at the shipyard for the next 35 years. We're teaching you a whole lot of skills and how they fit in in a lot of different ways. And that's what makes it really exciting. And I think the best thing we can ever do is just let the young people who are the ambassadors be the ambassadors and they sell the program. We don't have to, we don't have to do it. I was really excited to hear that there were a lot of, there was a lot of excitement about academy choices this year and that, you know, people are really getting, going home and saying not just, oh, I have to make this decision and they want me to do, but I'm so excited, this is what I get to do. And we're hearing that and it's very, very exciting. It's a credit to, to the young people and all the teachers who are, it's hard learning a new way to do stuff. It's hard way, learning a new way to plan and to focus. And it's a whole lot easier to hand somebody a worksheet than it is to say, what, this is a question, how are we going to solve this problem? And it's, it's a lot more fun in education to do it that way, but it's a credit to all of you. And every time you give the report, I'm more excited. So good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Henry. Anyone here? Yes, Ms. Smith.
I'm just excited because I was on the board previously and that's when they just first started. So this is like a fast forward for me all of a sudden. And I just can't believe all this stuff is just so many things going on. So it's awesome job. I do have a couple of questions and they might be things that everybody already knows, but I'm going to get caught up here a little bit. I really enjoyed what you said there about working backwards and having things measurable and having those metrics in place because that's how you ensure that what is it you want to have and then that you can measure it and know you got there. And you were talking about the dashboard and how it integrates with the student information. Can the students then actually monitor their own progress also and parents? Can they see how they are doing to those measures or?
They will be able to do the portrait of the graduate piece. And we're working with Mr. Eagle to make certain that they're able to have some ways to set individual goals for themselves and monitor their progress moving forward.
Okay, great, great. And then one thing I saw, all the way from ninth to 12th grade, there's so many, there's mentorships, internships, apprenticeships, all kinds of real life things which are awesome. Are you seeing that as an issue, like trying to get enough businesses out there to, for all those students from all those grades to have those opportunities?
We would always welcome more. So that's always a unique challenge to get more involved. But I think the more the word spreads about the great work Hampton City Schools is doing with the transformation process, more folks are interested in becoming on board and a part of the academies process.
Yeah, I hope so because businesses can get a lot out of this. They really can. All that young talent and yeah, really fresh ideas. I think they would do very well. But those were my main questions for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Dr. Woodhouse.
Yes, Mr. Haynes and Ms. Heard, sound like a law firm. Usually I have questions to ask, but I just wanted to make a comment. I was excited when I heard about these summer paid internships. It took me back to when I was a teenager around 16 and the federal government had those programs where young people could work during the summer. So I was really excited about that. Thank you so much for, for that kind of a program and having that kind of insight. One of the questions that I was going to ask, and you probably have already told us, but how many coaches from the Ford Next Generation have they allotted to us?
Two.
Two. Now, they covering all of the different academies? And how many are they responsible for?
So the Ford Next Generation Learning, we have a roadmap coach and an implementation coach. And so they are a support system to us. So we reach out to them and we have bi-weekly phone calls. They're actually be here next week for our mid-year review and things of that nature. But in addition to them, we also have our coaches, the Academies of Hampton coaches. And so in each building, we have one academy coach allocated per high school. So we have four who implement the work and create the opportunities with our business partners and things of that nature.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That was a good question, Dr. Woodhouse. Because you know, if we have two that are coming from Ford, you would wonder how we spread them out. But our internal coaches do such a great job as well. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Samuels.
Have a comment just to answer Monica's question as it relates to internship. Yes, the city of Hampton is very intentional. And I can speak on behalf of the Health of Families Incorporated. We work closely with the academy. They help Human Services Academy at Hampton High to ensure that those students that are in that academy, academy receive internship at our school age program, working with child development. Secondly, I just want to share with Ms. Heard that I had the privilege last month to participate in the Human Services Advisory Meeting at Hampton High. And I was extremely impressed with the community partners that were sitting in that meeting and sharing information about how to actually develop this program. And so, yeah, I was very impressed. Unfortunately, I didn't follow up with you, but I'm sharing this information with you tonight. I was very impressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. And like you mentioned, there's a lot of intentionality with the internships and externships. But when we're looking at this transformational process, we can certainly use more or have more businesses and partnerships with the academies and Hampton City Schools.
Okay. Yes, sir.
First of all, you know, every time we talk about the academies, I get excited. I think when I, I made that visit to the other academies, I'm not even going to call their name, you know, I was already thinking about the things that we were doing here in Hampton. And as I continue to see us truly transform teaching and learning through the academies, I see that we're doing a much better job. And I'm just going to toss this out there again as far as being a demonstration site because, you know, when you have a good thing, you know, that can truly benefit teaching and learning across the board, I think that's something that we need to be prepared and position ourselves to be able to show what we're doing here in the city of Hampton.
I think that's, yes, that's a great remark, Dr. Mason. I agree as well. Any other comments from board members? You know, I have to piggyback on what Ms. Henry said. Our students are excited about the academies. I ran into a student not long ago and I said, you know, where do you go to school? And they identified about the academy, didn't even say the school. So that just tells you that they really are excited and you all are doing a great job. I think it's exciting in many ways. One of the things we talked about, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Dr. Smith, but I will because I know you're up for it, is that piece that speaks to the portrait of a graduate, Hampton graduate. Dr. Smith, the other night at the NAACP meeting, spoke about that, but he added that social and emotional piece. Could you just talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. And so as we, as we think through the portrait of a Hampton graduate, we want to ensure that we have all of the supports in place so that when they leave us, indeed that they're college, career and life ready. And so on the academic side, we have our tiers in terms of tier one, tier two and tier three in terms of supports for the academics. But we also have the climate and the culture and a focus on social and emotional learning. We all know that we have a culture that's in place. Those are our core values. And we also understand that over time, each day the climate can change, the temperature will change. You know, yesterday we were in the seventies. Today, quite different when I walked in. And so socially emotional learning, we help to regulate in terms of that climate, in terms of that temperature, based upon empowering students with that social and emotional strategies so that they can self-manage and identify and work through whatever they might be dealing with as an individual. But it's also for adults because each day, things will change for us. Circumstances will change. But it's to focus on that portrait of a Hampton graduate to ensure that we're empowering our young people in a holistic way that when they walk across that stage, that those things that, situations that may occur on a regular basis, that they don't get in the way and become showstoppers as it relates to the portrait of a Hampton graduate. And so I'm delighted that the approach, that when we think about one division, one transformation, it's all about what we're doing in terms of pre-K through 12th grade and empowering our young people with strategies so that they can move forward and, and do very well. So.
Thank you. See, I knew you were up for the challenge. Appreciate it.
Just recognizing that the SEL piece or social emotional learning piece also speaks to the whole concept of positive sense of self and purpose.
And I know that pleases you, Dr. Mason.
Yes, it does. And Madam Chair, the socially emotional piece, and I know we're not presenting on that this evening, but I would encourage individuals who may be viewing tonight to really go to our website and learn even more about the Academies of Hampton, but also about really the practices that we have around social and emotional learning and our climate and culture. Because I, I think as a school division, we're leading in that regard.
I would agree. I would agree.
So I, I want to thank you for the opportunity to make that comment.
Yeah. And I wanted to make, have you make that comment because we are leading in that area. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's back to me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Haynes and Ms. Heard. At this time, Madam Chair, members of the board, we'll have the business and operations report and Ms. Dorch will come forward. And we're also excited to have Ms. Dorch each time that she stands before us and the expertise that she brings certainly to the process. Because when we think about transformation around teaching and learning and the student experience along with civic and business engagement, it's important to recognize that we have to have business principles and practices in place in order to support what we're doing in terms of the teaching and learning of this transformation. And so Ms. Heard has a good working knowledge and certainly works from the perspective in her department to ensure that, that we have the resources and the processes are in place to support this. And so I want to thank Ms. Dorch for her leadership in the area as well.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Madam Chair, Chair, Vice Chair Kilgore, school board members, Dr. Smith again, and our Hampton community. So it's my pleasure tonight to present the December 2019 monthly report. So at the end of December, our revenues totaled $87 million and that's approximately 1.8% higher than the previous fiscal year, with much of that increase being related to state revenue around our state compensation supplement and then also increased state sales tax payments. Additionally, our total expenditures and encumbrances totaled $109 million and that is 7.3% higher than the previous fiscal year. And that increase is primarily related to payroll costs, which have increased due to our 3% compensation raise. And then additionally, we have increased capital on projects and some of those capital projects were explained within the Academies of Hampton update. Then just as a reminder, our budget was based on a average daily membership or ADM of 18,455. And as reported at last month's school board meeting, we are currently projecting an increase in our average daily membership. And the final ADM will be known at the end of March 31st, mid-April as well. And then at that time, we will communicate to the school board any changes in our state funding. And then subsequently, we'll also recommend an increase in our appropriation from the city council, but that will be based on our final state payment amount. And as always, within your report, you have a list of transfers to and from the technology classification. That concludes the December 2019 report.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dorch. Any comments from board members? Thanks again.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, that concludes superintendent staff reports.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Now moving on to item five, the hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communication or petitions. I have received one. Ms. Bowles, would you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and are defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles.
Good evening. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my sister, Sarah Kennedy, who has laryngitis and cannot speak. Here is her speech. I'm here tonight to discuss my experience as a parent of a student with learning disabilities. I will refer to my daughter tonight using a different name. My daughter, Anne, is a sixth grade student at Spratley Gifted Center and she is twice exceptional. She is gifted and she has learning disabilities. Although she was identified as gifted early on, she would not have been assessed with learning disabilities if it were not for me. Sadly, she would have slipped through the cracks. As a preschooler, Anne was bright and creative. She had an extensive vocabulary and created impressive artwork, which far surpassed the abilities of her peers. I knew that she was special, but in kindergarten, I began to think something was wrong. Anne went to a private school where her peers were already reading, but she could not master a single sight word. She attended Smith Elementary beginning in the first grade. She was identified with a phonics deficit and was pulled for reading help. By the end of the year, she was reading above grade level. And because of that, I was told that I should not worry about her reading. I knew nothing about learning disabilities and I believed what I was told. While at Smith, Anne was also identified as gifted and she was accepted into Spratley in the third grade. Since kindergarten, I also worried that Anne may have ADHD. I expressed my concerns to her third grade teacher, but like previous teachers, she was not concerned about ADHD. She was concerned, however, that Anne still spelled phonetically. During the following summer, I paid out of pocket for Anne to be tested independently. She was assessed with a specific learning disability in writing. Unfortunately, the evaluator failed to identify her other learning disabilities. When I returned to Spratley with the diagnosis, Anne was given a 504 plan. I was told that since she was not failing, she did not qualify for an IEP. I know now that this is absolutely false, but I naively trusted the school. In fourth grade, without the support she needed, Anne continued to struggle in several areas. For example, in math, due to her memory deficit, it took her three class periods to complete math tests that her peers finished in less than one. She was denied a calculator because she was not identified with a math disability. Her struggles began to take a huge toll on her self-esteem. She referred to herself as stupid and frequently questioned why she was at Spratley. Pursuant to her request from me, Anne was at Spratley. Pursuant to a request from me, Anne was tested by the school, who felt that she did not need additional supports. I knew that this was wrong, and I hired another independent evaluator who tested Anne at the beginning of fifth grade. Finally, she was diagnosed with ADHD and specific learning disabilities in reading, writing, and math. An IEP meeting was convened, and by the time she was found eligible, she was failing every subject. I and my family went through a long struggle, which was a burden financially and emotionally to get Anne identified. I will fast forward due to time constraints, but in summary, my daughter's IEP was not implemented properly after it was created. There is a sense at Spratley that because she is gifted, her disabilities do not count. When she began to fail again, all of her special ed services were discontinued to concentrate on overdue missing assignments. I thought it would be better when her special ed teacher retired, but I was wrong. This school year, I have filed three special education state complaints with the Virginia Department of Education. It took a monumental effort on my behalf to get her special education services fully implemented. However, even though Anne is now reportedly receiving all of her services, they are still often inappropriate. For example, rather than working on the specific areas she struggles with, the special ed teacher often simply shows her flashcards with letters on them. When Anne complains, the teacher says she is not allowed to do anything more difficult. Now, Spratley is attempting to drastically reduce her services just a year after she was found eligible. In the current proposed IEP, her reading goal has been eliminated. Further, the school is using data that is part of her education record to support these changes, and they have refused to provide that data to me for several months. Withholding these records is a violation of federal law. Hampton City Schools has and continues to deny Anne a right to a free and appropriate public education. I am not alone as a parent facing these obstacles in Hampton. I have talked to other parents facing similar hurdles, some with stories far worse than ours. Tonight, Dr. Smith, I ask you to intervene in my daughter's situation as detailed in my letter. However, I also urge you to address the problems with special education in Hampton City Schools as a whole. Our disabled children are not receiving the help they need. My daughter's story as a gifted student is unique, but our struggle with special education is not unusual. Please intervene so that Hampton's special needs children may receive the education that they deserve. Thank you so much for your time this evening. We are providing full copies of the letter to Dr. Smith for the members
Ms. Bowles, do you have any additional ones?
No, I don't.
Thank you. The next item for business is items for action. It consists of 6.01 minutes of the school board meeting of January 15th, 2020, 6.02 certification of the closed session of January 15th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Uh, Madam Chair, move approval of, uh, action items 6.01 and 6.02, or do we need to keep them?
Well, I think both of them because.
I'm going to do.
Monica will probably abstain, but we can.
Right, okay. I'm going to do it as a block.
Okay.
Approval of action items 6.01 and 6.02.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Kilgore and second by, Dr., Mr. Samuels, that we take 6.01 and 6.02 as a block for approval. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Abstain.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item for business is information. The next meeting of the Hampton School Board will take place on Wednesday, February 19th, 2020, at Rupert Sargent Building, 1 Franklin Street, 6:30 PM. I hope, like Ms. Gole, I will have gotten rid of my laryngitis by then. She said it takes two and a half weeks, so I'll go with that. Um, any other information item coming from the superintendent?
Madam Chair, no, no additional business from the superintendent. Thank you.
Okay, any additional information from board members? Yes, Mr. Samuels?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I have two information that I would like to announce. Um, the Sixth Annual STEM Symposium and College Fair will be held on Saturday, February the 22nd, at the Hampton Roads Convention Center, and it is from 10 to 3, and is for pre-K through 12th grade students who would like to receive information about STEM and college. Secondly, um, New Horizon will have their open house tomorrow, and I plan to be in attendance just to see, um, the operations at New Horizon. So, I just want to let our community, uh, be aware of those two, I, um, activities.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Any other comments from board members, information items? Yes?
So, I know I usually end up the, end the school board meeting with a quote, so.
And we look forward to that.
Uh, I have a quote. I think it's kind of similar to something I've said one time, but something I heard the other day. "Good enough isn't good enough if it can be better, and better isn't good enough if it can be best."
I like that. Thank you so much, Mr. Bowles. Yes, Dr. Smith said he's going to use that one. Dr. Smith likes to use quotes. I'm going to tell you, he hears from other folk. Sure know other comments from board members? I'd like to thank Ms. Monica Smith yet again. You hit the ground running, and, um, it's like you never left. So, that's a good thing. With that being said, we adjourned.